You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, March 23, 2020. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Pam Ferrone.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, and just.
May God bless America.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Judge Commissioners, Ms. Bar, and all county leaders, thank you again for this opportunity. And I invite those who desire to join with me. Almighty God, how grateful we are to know and serve a holy God who loves us and cares for each of us, a God who does not abandon us in times of trouble, a God who has given us His written word to guide us through good times and troubled times. Lord, we are especially grateful for the promises of Psalm 91, which speak directly to our cares and concerns today. He who dwells in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. We will say of the Lord, "He is my refuge, my fortress, my God; in Him I will trust." Surely he shall deliver us from the snare of the fowler and from the perilous pestilence. And from Psalm 18, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous run into it and are safe." We hide ourselves in your presence, Lord; we run to you, our strong tower. How grateful we are that our county leaders are doing their very best to lead us, to prepare for every possible scenario. We pray for supernatural wisdom from above as they endeavor to keep the population of El Paso County safe from this coronavirus pestilence and from the economic ramifications it brings. El Paso County, I say to you from Psalm 91, "Because you have made the Lord, who is our refuge, even the Most High, your dwelling place; no evil shall befall you, nor shall any plague come near your dwelling, for he shall give his angels charge over you, to keep you in all your ways." In the name of the Most High God, amen, and so be it.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrone. Always a pleasure to have you here. Just a brief...
I'm sorry, Judge. Can we hold on just one second? I'm being told that there's no sound on the feed. If you can give me just one second before you make an announcement, I think it's really important.
Absolutely.
Might have to come back. Yeah, if there was no sound, then...
Test 1234. Test 12... Yep, we're getting it on YouTube. Testing 1234.
We did not have any up till then?
The prayer came through. The invocation came through.
It went through.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Ferrone. It did go through.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to thank everybody, especially that we're getting better at telecommuting and being able to Skype and all the other different things that we need to do under these circumstances. And of course, to thank the community and our county employees, we have to make a lot of decisions that impact our own employees probably more so, because we have to be role models in our community. And so I thank all the county employees and the people listening in our community for, you know, being able to adhere. I think it's a great community always stands up and is really respectful of our decisions, and we thank you for that. I also want to address the business community that has been impacted severely in some cases, and just want to let everyone know that it's a balance between, you know, getting the medical advice that we've been getting from the public health, OEM, and we need to respect that probably more so. And so the balance is between the containment of the spreading of the virus and having shorter-term collateral impact on the business community. And so I understand the impact it has on the business community, but I also understand how much further it would go if the virus did spread. And right now, at this particular point, we don't have community spread, which is indication of the incredible unity of our community to stay indoors and try their best not to be around and, you know, just to adhere to the orders that we have presented throughout. We do not have any changes, or most of the changes came to the hospitals, and what they needed to do is the governor proposed more capacity, and a lot of effort was going in that direction. We'll be getting back together. Dr. O., as we now kindly refer to him, feels that we do need to be more proactive with respect to shelter in place. We have not made a decision as to whether we're going that route at this time. If there is a trigger, it'll be that we start getting, you know, cases that have to do with community spread that would obviously take us in that direction. So I just want everybody to know that we're trying to be reality-based as a community. We're trying to see what's happening in our community versus what's happening in other communities. The governor was generous enough to allow local governments to make their decisions. There's a lot of counties that haven't been impacted, and so he's allowing us. And so I'm very thankful. We have a great Commissioners' Court, very supportive commissioners, very sensitive to each one of their precincts. And so we just have to take one step at a time, and we'll be talking in a lot of details about this. But I think one of the most crucial at this time for everybody to know is that the courthouse will be closed to the general public. And that means that only if you have anything to do with the judicial system or anything that we would say is essential, but primarily related to, you know, courts and law and these kinds of things that happen that we cannot shut down the court. I did speak to Jaime Esparza, and he needs to be open. We still have a relationship with the jail, and so there needs to be, you know, people that continue to keep the system going. So once again, I thank the community, the business community as well. I hope you do understand we're extremely sensitive to the business community. But once again, we're really taking the direction of our medical professionals who feel and understand what would contain the virus at this point in time. And I think that's more important than anything else that we could think about at this time in this face of our challenge of this insidious virus. So thank you for allowing me those initial comments. And Jessica, we can continue with the agenda.
Thank you, Judge. Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4U. For item 4B, we do have a correction to read in. Item 4B should read with the correction from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Approve Amendment Number 23 to the County of El Paso's 2019 through 2020 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase special revenue by $1,184,000, increase grants by $564,012.74, thus increasing the overall budget of $474,991,736.36 to $475,556,933.10. Further, approve and authorize to include a transfer of $250,000 from GF General Admin Operation Contingencies to General Fund Admin COVID-19 Operation Expenses General. Are there any other items that the members of the public or court would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
None. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the remaining. Second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is the Public Comment. At this time, we do not have anybody signed up to speak for a public comment, so no action for item number five.
We do have a system, just to clarify for the public. We do have a system for individuals to call in, and they leave a name and number, and it places them in a queue. And then we call them back if they do want to participate in public comment virtually or from afar.
Thank you, Betsy. That's very...
Yes, sir.
How does the public... What's the number or... Because I think we need to make that well-known.
Yes, sir. So on the very front of every one of our agendas and everywhere our agenda is posted, we have to participate in public comment, please call 888-8 and then the word El Paso, or 888-835-7276. And that will place you in the queue. You leave your name and number that you want to speak at public comment, and you leave your name and number, and it'll place you in the queue to be called during public comment. And then once the first caller is finished with their public comment, it will then call the next caller who leaves that message. So individuals will be able to participate if they don't want to attend in person.
Betsy, same rule applies on the five-minute, and if we get a little overwhelmed, is there a way that we could make that adjustment? Because it could be very little, or it could be overwhelming where we would not be able to conduct our business.
Yes, sir. So the court always has the ability. So if you had a topic where you had maybe had 12 people sign up to speak on the same topic, the court could ask the group to not be repetitive or to designate, if everybody was going to speak about the same thing, to designate a few callers to be the spokesperson for the group, those things of that nature. You'll see, we're also going to use call-in today methods for some of our agenda items as well.
Okay, thank you, Betsy.
Yes, sir.
And it's the same for other agenda items? I guess they would just fall into a queue and just have to say what agenda item they wish to speak on?
Yes, sir. They call the same number.
And Nicole, you'll help us with getting that information out as well.
Item number six, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Betsy?
Judge, thank you so much. We are trying to provide more written updates to the court on current operations, but just kind of to give some perspective of what our departments are doing and why. As we've all seen across the country, we've seen the rapid growth in cases, and we've seen the community spread. Obviously, El Paso County is at nine confirmed cases as of Saturday. We had our first confirmed case on March 13. So while we're thankful that the situation has shown, has not shown cases of community spread, I want to assure the court that our departments...
Good to have you here. Just a brief.
I'm sorry, Judge, can we hold on just one second? I'm being told that there's no sound on the feed.
Okay.
If you can give me just one, one second before you make an announcement. I think it's really important.
Absolutely.
Might have to come back. Yeah, if there was no sound, then.
Test one, two, three, four. Test one, two. Yep, we're getting it on YouTube. Testing one, two, three, four.
We did not have any up till then?
The prayer came through. The invocation came through.
It went through. Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Ferroni. It did go through. Okay, thank you. So I just want to thank everybody, especially that we're getting better at telecommuting and being able to Skype and all the other different things that we need to do under these circumstances. And of course, to thank the community and our county employees, we have to make a lot of decisions that impact our own employees probably more so because we have to be role models in our community. And so I thank all the county employees and the people listening in our community for, you know, being able to adhere. I think it's a great community always stands up and is really respectful of our decisions, and we thank you for that. I also want to address the business community that has been impacted severely in some cases and just want to let everyone know that it's a balance between, you know, getting the medical advice that we've been getting from the public health, OEM, and we need to respect that probably more so. And so the balance is between the containment of the spreading of the virus and having shorter-term collateral impact on the business community. And so I understand the impact it has on the business community, but I also understand how much further it would go if the virus did spread. And right now, at this particular point, we don't have community spread, which is indication of the incredible unity of our community to stay indoors and try their best not to be around and, you know, just to adhere to the orders that we have presented throughout. We do not have any changes or most of the changes came to the hospitals and what they needed to do is the governor proposed more capacity. And a lot of effort was going in that direction. We'll be getting back together. Dr. O., as we now kindly refer to him, feels that we do need to be more proactive with respect to shelter in place. We have not made a decision as to whether we're going that route at this time. If there is a trigger, it'll be that we start getting, you know, cases that have to do with community spread that would obviously take us in that direction. So I just want everybody to know that we're trying to be reality-based as a community. We're trying to see what's happening in our community versus what's happening in other communities. The governor was generous enough to allow local governments to make their decisions. There's a lot of counties that haven't been impacted, and so he's allowing us. And so I'm very thankful. We have a great commissioners' court, very supportive commissioners, very sensitive to each one of their precincts. And so we just have to take one step at a time, and we'll be talking a lot of details about this. But I think one of the most crucial at this time for everybody to know is that the courthouse will be closed to the general public. And that means that only if you have anything to do with a judicial system or anything that we would say is essential, but primarily related to, you know, courts and law and these kinds of things that happen, that we cannot shut down the court. I did speak to Jaime Esparza, and he needs to be open. We still have a relationship with the jail, and so there needs to be, you know, people that continue to keep the system going. So once again, I thank the community, the business community as well. I hope you do understand we're extremely sensitive to the business community. But once again, we're really taking the direction of our medical professionals who feel and understand what would contain the virus at this point in time. And I think that's more important than anything else that we could think about at this time in this face of our challenge of this insidious virus. So thank you for allowing me those initial comments. And Jessica, we can continue with the agenda.
Thank you, Judge. Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4U. For item 4B, we do have a correction to read in. Item 4B should read with the correction from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Approve Amendment Number 23 to the County of El Paso's 2019 through 2020 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase special revenue by $1,184. Increase grants by $564,012.74, thus increasing the overall budget of $474,991,736.36 to $475,556,933.10. Further, approve and authorize to include a transfer of $250,000 from GF, General Admin Operation Contingencies, to General Fund Admin COVID-19 Operation Expenses General. Are there any other items that the members of the public or court would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
None. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the remaining? Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is a public comment. At this time, we do not have anybody signed up to speak for a public comment, so no action for item number five.
We do have a system, just to clarify for the public, we do have a system for individuals to call in, and they leave a name and number, and it places them in a queue. And then we call them back if they do want to participate in public comment virtually or from afar.
Thank you, Betsy. That's very.
Yes, sir.
How does the public, what's the number or, because I think we need to make that well-known.
Yes, sir. So on the very front of every one of our agendas and everywhere our agenda is posted, we have to participate in public comment, please call 888-8, and then the word El Paso, or 888-835-7276, and that will place you in the queue. You leave your name and number that you want to speak at public comment, and you leave your name and number, and it'll place you in the queue to be called during public comment. And then once the first caller is finished with their public comment, it will then call the next caller who leaves that message. So individuals will be able to participate if they don't want to attend in person.
Betsy, same rule applies on the five-minute, and if we get a little overwhelmed, is there a way that we could make that adjustment? Because it could be, it could be very little, or it could be overwhelming where we would not be able to conduct our business.
Yes, sir. So the court always has the ability, so if you had a topic where you had maybe had 12 people sign up to speak on the same topic, the court could ask the group to not be repetitive or to designate, if everybody was going to speak about the same thing, to designate a few callers to be the spokesperson for the group, those things of that nature. You'll see, we're also going to use call-in today methods for some of our agenda items as well.
Okay, thank you, Betsy.
Yes, sir.
And it's the same for other agenda items? I guess they would just fall into a queue and just have to say what agenda item they wish to speak on?
Yes, sir. They call the same number.
And Nicole, you'll help us with getting that information out as well.
Item number six, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Betsy?
Judge, thank you so much. We are trying to provide more written updates to the court on current operations, but just kind of to give some perspective of what our departments are doing and why. As we've all seen across the country, we've seen the rapid growth in cases, and we've seen the community spread. Obviously, El Paso County is at nine confirmed cases as of Saturday. We had our first confirmed case on March 13th. So while we're thankful that the situation has shown, has not shown cases of community spread, I want to assure the court that our departments are prepared should the judge order a lockdown or a shelter in place. Our departments provided their plans for lockdown operations to me over the weekend in preparation, and we have compiled those plans. We've implemented teleworking and are focused on solutions to still provide service either telephonically, through postal mail, or electronically. We're still evaluating the impacts to elected officials and all of their operations. As you know, some of those are essential, but many are already doing the same thing as our departments while maintaining statutorily required operations. This morning, I received a video from JPD where they have a virtual, they have a, their receptionist, they're serving at the front desk virtually. So they have a screen, and she's interacting virtually. It's great to see what all of our departments are doing in an innovative way and to make this work. This is, this is a time where public servants are really at their best. They're focusing on the safety and care of the public while still delivering essential services. From our IT team to our jailers and law enforcement, we have strong, smart, and dedicated individuals making things work as safely as possible. You heard the item earlier where we amended consent, our budget adjustment. One of the items was moving $250,000 from General Fund Contingencies into the COVID-19 case to deal with issues as they come up. But I assure you that we are communicating with the court and with the other department heads to the greatest extent possible in making services available to the public through those alternate methods during this time. And with that, if the court has any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you. We really appreciate, Betsy. Thank you, and to all of our county staff that's really been working over the weekend and putting in a lot of extra hours as our community deals with this. We appreciate everybody's work and efforts to, you know, to deal with this, you know, very unique and unfortunate situation that our community is dealing with. So thank you to everybody for their service.
It's our pleasure.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Robinson? Go ahead. I want to echo those comments of Commissioner Betis, that the staff are doing outstanding job and continue to do that. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Item number seven, health and social services.
I also wanted to go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Betis.
Judge, regarding, I know things are moving very fast, and particularly in your capacity as county judge, where, you know, I'm sure you're receiving constant updates and everything regarding on decisions in the courthouse. I guess, is there a way that where, I guess, our offices or somehow that there could be a notification system, at least between us? I don't know if it'd be, if it's going to be allowed via email with Open Meetings Act stuff, but so that we can help to push that information out to the public as well. I know things move very fast, and I just wanted to see if there was anything perhaps.
I had to discuss with Nicole, you have been, that information has been going to their staff, the majority of the information has been going to their staff, because I was also worried about how do I handle the Open, you know, Meetings Act and all the things that we have to do there. And so I had been pushing it into, or she had been pushing it into your staff, so I'm hoping that you are getting that information. And also, on a sort of general kind of thing, we've been trying to get the information here first and then outside later, so I'm hoping that.
Judge, just, you can, and Nicole can do this on your behalf, but you can notify the entire commissioners' email group, the court just cannot respond.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Hi, Judge, Judge Commissioners Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. I'm on the line, so you can't see me, but I think you can hear me.
Thank you.
But absolutely, you can send that out for informational purposes only, and any orders, any subsequent orders, any information that you're receiving, you certainly can forward that on to the group. Just the group cannot respond back at all, because then you'll be engaging in any discussions. But absolutely, any information comes your way, you can forward that out to the, to the members of the commissioners' court.
Yeah, I thank you, because we've been sort of more implicitly trying to get information now, thinking that we have that situation. So now we know that, and there's a lot of things, just to let you know, we've been very close to the Metro Six on a daily, I think every 15, 20 minutes, I either get a text or see what they're doing. And then I've been sending everything to Christina and Joanne to let them know this is what they're doing. Can you prepare us to what we might be able to do and so forth? But I'll be just a lot more direct with commissioners' court now that I understand the process. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner Robinson, my comment, the only comment I have is the timing of this. We should hear about it before we hear from the media. Did you hear me?
Yes, sir, uh-huh.
The timing of this, we should get that information before it gets to the media.
Yeah, well, we've tried. I hope that we've done, it's very unusual that we would go out without that information going to internally, prior to, but I hope now that it could be more direct, maybe we're missing some opportunities by not being as direct as it was requested. Commissioner Stout?
I just had a couple of comments, suggestions, and maybe, maybe requests. First of all, when it, there was a little bit of confusion on my, on my part when it comes to what exactly closing down the courthouse means. So, and I could imagine that the public may be confused as well, because there were questions that constituents of mine expressed when it comes to who's going to be let in the courthouse. And so I know that you said that it's closed to the public, right? But we, we had an invocation here today, which, in my opinion, is a member of the public, not anything against Ms. Ferroni, but we're talking about making sure that we have essential and, you know, duties or people that are just essential here, and I think that that may need to be looked at. And when it comes to the business that people can do with the clerk's offices, there's, there are questions about that. So I think that we need to make sure that, you know, that the clerk's offices, as well as the courts, put out information to the public regarding how you can, if you need to file something, where you can file it, if you can file it, you know, who, obviously, if nobody from the public is allowed into the building, that means lawyers can't come in and file personally, so that means they would have to do something electronically. Tax office as well, I think we need more clarification on that. I know that their tax office is not in the courthouse, but they're, they have installations in other parts of the county. What's, I know there was some information given out yesterday regarding that, but all of these, all of these offices that have the most contact with public, I think there's a lot of confusion as to what, what's going on and exactly how people can continue to do business with the county, but obviously not being able to show up here at the courthouse and get in. So if we can talk to, I think, those folks in the judiciary and in the clerk's offices and the tax office and other, and other folks that, so we can just put out that information all together as we're talking about, you know, closing down the courthouse, I think that would be very beneficial for, for the public.
I agree. Yeah, one of the, and I know you've got more, but the elected officials can take their own actions, and so we've, on a lot of times, we've had to make a decision based on somebody else's decisions, like the county clerk and so, but I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, if, if they're gonna continue working, that's fine if they're, if they're not, I mean, I understand that a lot of, a lot of the decisions are up to them, but we need to make sure that the public knows exactly, exactly what is going on. Also, I wanted to, you know, I've seen other, other communities like, like Dallas and other counties talking or actually going to shelter in place. And I know that we don't, we, I mean, we have nine cases here. They're all travel-related, and so, you know, there may not be the sense of urgency as there is in other communities. I mean, in Dallas, there's more than 100, I think, 130 cases, and there's been three deaths at least up to this point. But I think we really need to consider heavily taking those precautions as well here, because we don't even want to get to that point, right? And we've been told many times by health, health officials and medical professionals that the best way to keep the spread from the virus from happening is limiting contact, right? And so I would, I know that this is a decision that, from what I understand from our legal team, that is solely your decision, Judge, to do shelter in place. But I think that it would be a prudent and smart action to take. I'm advocating for it to mitigate, you know, a situation like Dallas's. You know, I would, I would hate to see somebody, or, you know, more people getting sick and the possibility of a death happening and, you know, and we haven't done as much as we could to try to stop that from happening. And I know it's a difficult decision because it really impacts our economy. I think, I think in Dallas, they can, people can still go to restaurants and get takeout. They can still go to the supermarkets and still go to the pharmacies for those types of necessities, but it's a, it's an additional level of protection that I think that could be very, very helpful and could save, could save lives. And the other, you know, the other thing with, here in El Paso is that we're still only testing people that have, that fall under a certain criteria, right? So they have to present the symptoms, and I believe they have to have traveled to a certain area to be, to be tested. And so it may be that we, that there are a lot more people that may have the virus that are not being tested for it because of those certain stipulations. And so that's another factor to take into account when we're, when we're making all of these decisions that we're, that we're making. And I'd also, I'd also like to really reiterate kind of some of what we spoke about last week regarding introducing and new, new folks to the jail. That's, that's, you know, we, in the community are, everybody's working to make sure that we're social distancing and make sure that we are not in close contact with other folks and trying to take care of everything. And I understand that in the jail, and I understand that the steps are being taken, but I feel like we need to have a little bit more urgency when it comes to that as well. You know, I know, I know that it's completely up to the sheriffs and the police department and the DA to talk about who they're booking into the jail and the discretion that Sheriff Wiles discussed giving to his officers when it came to, you know, bringing people in. But I'm really afraid that, you know, you get one case that is introduced into the jail, and, you know, we've seen how this, how this disease can spread like wildfire and especially in close, in close quarters. I mean, we've seen how it's spread when people are doing things like social distancing and where people are doing, taking, taking these really great precautions. And, you know, I'm really worried about the safety of our employees in the jail, you know, because we have more than 2,000 people inside, inside our jails at any given time, right? More, not just the inmates, but also our sheriff's deputies and our detention officers and other, and other folks that work for the county that are, that are in the jail. And so I really want to take this, this chance again to urge the sheriff and the police chief and the DA and the judiciary to do every single thing that they can to try to reduce the amount of people that are being introduced into our jail, as well as, you know, folks that are already in jail that may not, that we may be able to get out, may be able to expedite their, their release. I'm not talking about releasing a murderer or, you know, very violent criminals, but, you know, I think there, there, there's more that can be done. And I'd like to request that, you know, we have some reporting for, for the public on a, on a weekly basis by the DA, by the sheriff, when it comes to these things, so that we, so that we can understand, you know, how, you know, first of all, what's, what's being done? I mean, I definitely heard the sheriff and the DA and the judiciary talking about precautions that they're taking and what's actually being done. But I'd like to have, you know, the public, you know, I'd like, I'd like there to be awareness and information given as to how, you know, how are we screening people that are, that are going in and out of the jail? What, what, what actions are actually being taken, both at intake and after admission? They talked about checking temperatures. I'm not sure how often that's happening. I'd like to understand what the process is on that, how often that's taken, that's being done, and how many folks are actually coming in and out. I'd also like to understand what our, what our current testing capacity is in the jail when it comes to COVID, because I don't, I don't know if we have any capacity at all. I'm not sure. That's something that, that's, that's kind of obscure to me, and I'd like to, to request that information as well. I'd like to know how many people, including police, county staff, attorneys, come and go from the jail on an average day? How long would it take for us to test everyone in the jail, if we had to test everybody in the jail? Do we have extra space in the jail? And is that being used during this time? Because as far as I can remember, we have a couple of floors that were closed down. Are we, are we planning on opening those, those floors up to kind of spread out the population so that they're not in such close quarters and having closer contact? How is, you know, the social distancing that we are all professing and talking about outside of the jail, how is that being taken, taken on inside of the jail? You know, are people given, being given masks? You know, all of these questions just come up for me. And, you know, at what point does, you know, potential being a flashpoint in the pandemic's local explosion come a greater threat to public safety than temporarily releasing certain people from the jail or not putting them in jail? I think that, I think that needs to be, you know, really, really looked at, and I think we need to have a policy in place to, to, to understand kind of what that, what that flashpoint or what that threshold is going to be. You know, I, I really think that the jails, the jails are one of the places that's at highest risk for the spread of this, of this illness in our community. And I think there needs to be a lot more urgency and a lot, a lot, a lot more done. And I'm, you know, again, willing to do anything that I can. My staff is available as well to try and help figure this out. I know that the, the judges have been doing quite a bit in, in making sure that we're not holding people that need to be held. I mean, that's a process that was put in place a while back here. I'm really talking, you know, more on looking at folks that are being introduced into our jail. And, I mean, I understand that we can leave things up to the discretion of officers, but I think that the leadership needs to take a leadership role in this and say, you know what, we need to set a policy, and we need to, we need to really be worried about this and see much more urgency to this situation. So I'd like to see if we can request those, that information from, from the sheriff's department and going forward, have a, have, as we're going, as we have these updates, I'd like to have an update as to what's going on in the jail. How many people are being booked is another question that I have on a, on a weekly basis. Is that going up or down? And, and of course, the other information that I laid out here. So I know that the sheriff's not here. There's, there's folks here from the sheriff's office. Hopefully, you can relay that information to, to him, or maybe, Betsy, we can get in contact with him to ask for that information. But I feel like it's, it's, we, we need to be as proactive as possible. But, um, I feel like, uh, it's, it's, uh, we, we need to be as proactive as possible.
Commissioner, excellent points. Betsy, could you, you know, there's some, uh, great questions and things that we need to understand. And mostly, you know, what are we doing to contain it? And there's so many dynamics that take place from not having as many, uh, you know, people come into our jails to the exposure with attorneys to, so I don't know. This sounds like a Joel kind of, uh, task, but we'll leave it up to you to, to really address that.
Yes, sir. And I'm already reaching out and we're going through all those, um, specific questions that Commissioner Stout has brought up and, um, sharing those with the sheriff's office to see, um, if we can't get a briefing on all of those issues. I also, I also have a couple of other, um, issues that have come up, um, separate from the jail issue. One of the things is we have pending bids that are scheduled to be open in the next week, which, um, often there's individuals who either want to attend those bid openings. And so we're wondering if we should proceed with those, if the, if the intent is for us to, um, delay those bid openings during this time. There are certain projects that, um, it will impact if we delay these openings. But there are, uh, it's another method of, um, public interaction. Right now I do believe, and I don't know if there's been any exemptions for this, and Deborah, you might be able to speak to this, about, um, people being able to be physically present if we do open them.
And, and when you, if we move towards the shelter in place, that's also a huge impact because that means things that we need to get done aren't going to get done just because of the decision that is made. So a lot of moving parts. But Deborah, could you elaborate on what Betsy just commented?
Yes. Good morning. Deborah Correjo Troll County Purchasing Agent. Right now I am taking moves and working with the departments so that we can delay any bid openings that are not mission critical. I'm requesting that the departments allow me to delay their bid openings. And this is for anything, um, that is currently active and on the streets. There's a twofold reason we want to do this. I want to delay the bid opening until the last Thursday in April. One, I believe it will give the county a chance to get past everything that we have to get past to handle this. But more than that, there's an, there's an unrecognized, um, aspect of this that we don't always think about internally. Our vendors are really being pressed right now to do the things that they need to do. There may not be time to respond to our bids. We could end up holding these bid openings at their normal times over the next couple of weeks and receiving no responses or very limited response. We don't know what the vendors are going through right now. I think, um, both the county and the vendor community could be helped. However, there are some bids on the street right now that I can't assess the criticality of what those mean to the departments. And so I'm trying to work with the department heads. For instance, there is a chance that if we do this, um, road paving program could be affected. So perhaps those aren't the ones we want to consider. I do not have anything either in opinion, um, that says I can just hold bid openings privately. Now that, that's the thing, I can always broadcast a bid opening. But generally it is considered the law that vendors can show up for these. And I don't want to take the chance of a vendor feeling like they have to show up. I don't want to take the chance of a vendor trying to show up and finding out they can't get in the building. There's just a lot of little things that would have to be worked out from a legal perspective. Our legal team's working really hard to get me the information that I need and some of the things in paper that I need, but I don't have those now. And I think the easiest way to attack this would be, um, to be given permission to delay our bid openings until we can get to a spot where we can see some light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, I think the key word you said is working with Betsy because she can tell you what's going to be critical and each department head. And so that way you don't work in isolation from a blanket, you know, delay of bids, but based on, on, on Betsy's, um, feedback with her own department heads. Uh, that, that's going to be real key, that it's not isolated to Deborah to make that decision without getting your feedback on.
And that's really why we're asking the court is if you all are okay with us delaying some of these, knowing that it will impact some projects, it will delay some projects.
Well, we have tremendous respect for your decision-making and, and obviously, I don't know how we would do, how do we go about giving you the support? Is it a consensus from us? Is it a vote or?
I just think a consensus will work.
Right. You're just giving your, this is Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. You would just be giving, um, direction on, on how to proceed on that. And then just one other thing I just wanted to address, um, uh, with regards to the, to the purchasing and the requirements. We are looking at that. We're finalizing an opinion, uh, to kind of reconcile what would be allowed, what, what would it be allowed? Of course, there is that avenue in terms of each of the departments doing their assessment, um, to tell what can, what can be delayed. But we are looking in terms of whether some of these items can be held via video conferencing, um, and some other, some other workaround. So we're definitely looking at that when we are preparing to issue a formal opinion to that effect to the, to the purchasing agent in the near future. We're, we're almost done with that opinion.
As always, thank you for that support. So I think there's consensus that, uh, we delay based on Betsy's feedback on which are critical. And then if there's any that you feel requires some discussion with the court, uh, Betsy, I know you're very good about knowing what needs to come to us and keeping us abreast. So I guess we, we do have consensus.
Commissioner Robinson, I, I agree with that, that assessment be made in regards to what's essential and not essential at this time, you know, throughout the county, you know, irrespective of the, the department head that Betsy has control. But I assess all the department heads throughout the, throughout the county as far as their bids. Do they need them now or can it, can it, can it wait till a later date?
Thank you. Yes, we have consensus and Deborah.
I would like to just say that, um, I, I've done this for a really long time. I've been doing this for about 22 years and I've gone through some major emergencies with other agencies. I am very grateful to be in this area right now because I feel it's being handled well. And, um, the coordination coming out of the county administrator's office and the departments and the way things are being handled and thought out makes my part of the job easier because we are competing for resources right now. And, um, so we're going to keep doing that. And everything I know will be sent to you either through the county administrator or through a direct update. And I think that's worked really well. Thank you so much.
No, and also thank you for your partnership with the city and state in communication as to what, what, what's needed and what support. And, you know, if there's access to certain things that you know about from a professional standpoint, that's been very helpful, that, that relationship. Thank you.
And Deborah, um, went the extra mile this weekend to help us get some gloves and is working on other supplies that we're really, really in important need. And so she worked diligently to help us get those things over the weekend. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We have an amazing team. Thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
And also I just wanted to say, well, I, I want to thank our media partners as well because they've been very critical and informing the public. And, and they've also been working around the clock, trying to cover so many with city council and the commissioner's court. And when things like the courthouse are closed and there's limited restrictions, it's, it's very difficult. So, so thank you very much to our media partners for, for all, for all your work. But I, I guess, you know, I do want to emphasize, I guess, after what happened in Dallas County, you know, when, when they talk about shelter in place, um, you know, we, we, you know, it might be something that's necessary and I suspect that the judge is going to be, um, in, in, in close consultation with the office of emergency management, with the mayor, uh, with medical professionals, you know, as, as, as we talk about that. I mean, but we just got to be very cautious, you know, essentially right now, that's what we're urging folks is not, is just really just make trips when necessary, you know, stay at home to the extent possible. You know, go to the stores, you know, if necessary, go, you know, still go to the pharmacy. And, and from my understanding, um, in, in Dallas, when they, when they talk about shelter in place, folks are still allowed to do those things. I just don't want their, want their to, you know, because there's this other term or this other plan that, that folks are going to start making another rush to the stores. It's not, um, necessary again, and, and folks just get what they need. But I do think at some point, um, you know, we're, the judge is also, there's going to have to be conversations about what has happened in other places like New York City, uh, as folks are, are supposed to be staying at home, practicing social distancing. A, a lot of folks are, are going to Central Park in New York. And I think we're still, we're seeing that here in El Paso County where there's a lot of folks, um, you know, because the parks are still open, both the city and at the county. And so a lot of folks, folks are going to the park. And, uh, you know, that's, that's not really, it's kind of, uh, running counter to, to, to what we're saying when we talk about social distancing. And, and so that's just, I think, some of the things that, that are going to be discussed moving forward. But again, just, just urging caution in the way that, that we, that this is reported to, to the public, you know, as we talk about this, it, it might be a very well, might be a necessary step as we look at our counterparts in Dallas County. But, but again, it's, it's, it's nothing to, to, to really, um, cause panic or, or cause folks to go to the stores and, and buy more supplies and things like that.
Yeah. One of the misconceptions is that if you're outdoors and you don't have an issue with gatherings. And yesterday we, our sheriffs and police department were really active, especially in Trans Mountain, people getting together. I spoke to Dr. Owen, uh, he sees that there is a possibility, excuse me, if the community did this right, that the parks would be a place to allow people to, to get their exercise, to do things. But if the public doesn't respond well and does have these interactions, then obviously then we have to curtail everything there is. You know, my comment was, uh, the state, and we're hearing all this from the, from the governor, but yet all the state parks were open and putting pressure on us to, to close our county parks like Escata. So this is something, and I appreciate what Commissioner Pettis is saying and his sensitivity to, to the problems. Yeah, we are going to look at very closely, how do we manage people being able to get outdoors? And that we, we help with that, but only to the point that it creates an issue. Yesterday it was an issue at Trans Mountain Road. Like I said, a lot of sheriffs and police and, you know, trying to break the, the crowds. And everybody was very cooperative is what I'm hearing from, uh, Tom Whitten was, says that everybody very cooperative. So it's more, once again, what Commissioner Pettis and Commissioner Stout are saying is that, that information has to be very clear and it's got to be out there and very precise. And we are having, and once again, thank you, the media, they've been extremely good. Like I said, sometimes there's a little glitch, we call them and then they straighten it out immediately. And so we're very grateful for that. But a lot of things that, that we can delay a little bit on has to do with the reaction from the community as to how they handle things. If they go out to a park and they don't abide by that, then actually then we're forced to close the park down or any other. People misunderstand, for example, flea markets are now closed, but they weren't this weekend. And that was, you know, a lot of people, you know, next to each other and, and, and not adhering. So everything that we've seen that does not go right, it's miscommunication or the community doesn't quite understand what needs to take place. So that's going to be our biggest challenge is once we make an order that we, you know, we're, we're very clear as to what has to happen. As Commissioner Stout said, like, you know, closing down the, um, the, uh, the courthouse does not mean we close it down to people that are coming in for legal situations. But that has to go out there. So I, I thank you both for, for those comments and, and we adhere to that.
Judge, if I could chime in. In, in my part of town, in the region that I reside in, you know, a lot of people at, at the grocery stores, you know, quite naturally, you know, is shopping. But as far as, uh, on the streets, I see very few cars, very, very, very little traffic. In the parks, people at the parks, but they're not gathering, uh, uh, people are walking, kids are playing in the park, but it's not a cluster of people. It, it, you say T and M or whatever, groups of people are, are, are clustered together. But you see a lot of people out walking and exercising, but, but, but by the same token, they're very, for the past week, I've seen very few cars compared to, particularly US 54. US 54, the third pair going north and south, connecting, uh, Northeast El Paso with Trans Mountain. That traffic is not there. So I, I don't think we're at a stage where, where we, we can assess it, but I don't think we're at a stage right now where we need to say what we need to do as shelter in place.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, read, read something here real quick. So, so, and, and what, it's, it's, uh, some bullet points on what sheltering in place, um, means in, in Dallas County, right? What they're doing in Dallas County right now and, and what that could look like here. So, so it says any, anybody, everybody must stay home, in their home, their apartment or hotel or motel room. They may leave if, uh, if they work an essential job or need to run essential errands such as going to the grocery store or doctor's office. All gatherings, public and private, outside of household are banned regardless of size. Outside exercise is permitted. So walking pets, uh, is also permitted. But, but, you know, you, you must walk, run or bike six feet away from other people. What's an essential job? Healthcare work considered essential, government jobs that provide the health, safety and welfare of public such as first responders, people who work in construction, public transportation utilities, are also considered essential as well as food service providers such as grocery stores and restaurants that are prepared, that prepare food for delivery and carryout. Residents are prohibited from attending religious services. They may be broadcast, but only, only 10 staff members allowed on site during the taping. Weddings are prohibited, funerals allowed, but, but social distancing of six feet is required. And all elective surgeries, dental work and doctor visits are prohibited. These could include chiropractors and some physical therapy. So that's, that's what they're doing in Dallas County, right? And, and, I mean, we may, we may even implement something like that. But, uh, I mean, it's going to be up to the people to, to actually, you know, follow the rules. And up to this point, we've been asking people to, to, to do, um, to do the social distancing and, and, and the, the self-isolation and, and such. But this takes, uh, takes it, uh, you know, a step further and, and I think is, is something that, that we really, really, really need to consider seriously doing. In Dallas County, last week there were 15 cases. Now there's over 130, right? We don't want that to happen here in El Paso. And there have been three people who have died. So in, in, in Dallas County. And so, um, again, I understand that, you know, it might not seem as urgent here because we don't have the, the, the high number of cases. But why do we, why, why are we going to risk even getting to that point? We can, we can take, we can take, uh, um, measures that, that will definitely help, mitigate the spread of, of, of this disease and that could possibly save, save, save people's lives. And so, um, people can still go outside, they can still, uh, uh, would still be able to, 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 do exercise outside, which is something that I think is, uh, is important, right? Because being outside, taking sunlight, uh, doing exercise is also good for our health and especially our, our mental health and, and as well as our physical health. But, you know, uh, we, I, I think we really need to, to, to take the lead on this and, and, um, and do what we can.
Very well taken. Thank you. Jessica?
Item number seven, health and social services. Approve and authorize county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Opportunity Center for the homeless, for reentry services for justice-involved homeless individuals and for overall emergency shelter needs in response to the COVID-19 crisis in the amount of $100,000. Funding is available in general fund, reentry support, contract services general, contract number 2020-0250.
Mr. Joel Bishop?
Good morning, county judge and commissioners. Joel Bishop with County Administration. I think IT is working on getting the opportunity.
You have reached the voicemail box of 9152.
We'll leave him a message. Yeah, I know John Martin wants to be on the line for this from the Opportunity Center. The MOU that you have comes from a item that was already approved by Commissioner's Court. We do think the timing here is critical. Rather than go through each, um, element, I just want to emphasize that the Opportunity Center remains the largest provider of reentry housing from the El Paso County Jail, more than, uh, all other homeless shelters combined, homeless services combined. And they, one of the unique challenges they have right now is that they have a large migrant population coming from out of state into their shelter. And at the time right now is very critical for them and for the county to ensure that the, the infrastructure there is, is supported and that their services maintain, uh, maintain and are enhanced. And this, we believe that this agreement will help with that and provide assistance with them to, to, uh, maintain their services, provide support for the reentry that they're doing, also deal with some of the unique. doing, also deal with some of the unique COVID challenges that they're facing right now in their emergency shelter. And I know, I don't know if we have John Martin on the line yet, but if it's okay with the judge, I could let Mr. Martin share a, some of the challenges that they're facing right now.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you, go ahead.
John, this is Joel. I asked them to go ahead and give a brief update of, of your challenges and, and on the Opportunity Center and, and that relate to this agreement.
Okay, am I on the phone at this point?
Yes.
Okay. To the judge and commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us to talk to you this. This is John Martin, I'm the deputy director for the Opportunity Center for the homeless. The predominant concerns that we currently have are going to mimic those that Commissioner Stoudt just brought forward with regard to the jail, and that we have a total, last night as an example, 105 men and approximately 50 women. And so for us to be able to do the social distancing that is talked about at this point, we literally need to cut our population in half. So we are being very proactive at this point. For example, we're now expanding our shelter from inside the building to include the parking lot between the two structures so that we can provide for the appropriate distance. As with many others within the community, we're having a difficult time getting the supplies that are needed for personal protection, as well as staff, volunteers and the clients themselves. One of the things that we've done is we're currently working with the city of El Paso, along with United Way, Paso del Norte Foundation and others, to identify and activate a shelter under the EOC so that we can meet the distancing requirements. Now, we have put forward that request, I believe it was on Thursday afternoon at approximately 2:30, and it was Nicole Perini with the city that put that request forward on our behalf, but we have not heard a response as of yet. The difficulty that we have, in addition to the population that we're currently serving, is we're still receiving approximately five to six intakes per day. These are new arrivals. We are a no-barrier shelter, which means that we welcome each and every person, but we soon may have to be selective as to who comes into the building, thus the need for an alternate shelter. Secondly, we have to prepare ourselves for the worst, from the standpoint that if there is a case identified within our population, we're looking at potentially quarantining the structure and the individuals within. So there's a number of issues, we're very concerned about this. I've heard some of the staff report to us as ground zero, or as a breeding area at this point, because we are working with a very complex group of individuals, and you must remember that approximately 26% of our individuals are justice-involved individuals, and that includes the county, with a small portion coming from the state beds. But we also have a very medically fragile population and a very old population. Roughly 20% of our population is over the age of 60, 40% over the age of 50, many of which are medically fragile, about a third have chronic health concerns, a third mental health diagnosis, and a third physical disabilities. And so we're very concerned at this point. The resources that you're going to provide to us will help us tremendously, from the standpoint that we need to bring on additional staff as we spread the individuals out into the courtyard, as an example. And then once we're able to get our hands on the appropriate supplies, to be able to purchase the supplies that are needed so that we maintain a safe environment for over 150 people on a given night. With that, I'll answer any questions.
No, John, we are so fortunate and grateful, because I know one of the impacts is that as we move in some of these orders, people are unemployed, people that were a little marginal now become homeless, and so we're very concerned about that, obviously. But I was going to ask you, is there any discussions with UMC, Jacob Sintron, as far as maybe some of the procedures that they use, or maybe some of the capacity they might have? They're, they're looking for other capacity right now, had long discussions with them over the weekend about the governor requesting that we look for more capacity, so I'm hoping that in finding some of that capacity, it could also address some of the needs of your medical needs that are taking place. You shouldn't have to be dealing with medical challenges there in a place that's not, that's not the reason to have the, your, 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 your center there. It's not for the medical component. And so, could you tell me a little bit of the relationship, or how we can help with the relationship with the medical community, so that we quickly address those medical needs that you have, and maybe those would be the people that would be moved out?
We have a direct relationship with the University Medical Center. In fact, we have individuals that are specifically here to try to divert those with medical needs to primary care in lieu of the emergency room. I have reached out to other individuals with regard to this particular crisis, but I have not reached out directly to Jacob Sintron as of yet, and I'd be more than happy to do so. But I would be remiss in not pointing out that one of the true blessings that we do have is we have an onsite health clinic, which is Central San Vicente. And so we have developed a response with them as to how we can handle individuals that are showing symptoms, and quickly identify whether or not that could potentially be COVID-19 or something, and I don't mean to use this term loosely, I was going to say simple as a flu or the cold. But we've been very diligent here in working with our co-located partners, and Central San Vicente is, is here to help us with those that are medically fragile, and then we reach out to UMC for those that require that level of care beyond primary care.
No, thank you. You know, Dr. Boss is an incredible director and very, you know, we work close with her, maybe not in this situation, but I think you just brought up a, a great point on how we need to see, you know, their needs as well. But, no, I thank you for the update, John, very helpful. Our best to Ray and everything that he does, and everyone in your staff. So we'll be very, very considerate and obviously very, keep an eye out on that. And I do encourage the relationship with, with Sintron, with Mr. Sintron, because of the things that he's looking at for capacity might make sense as well for, for you. So, and I too will follow up on that.
Thank you very much. Any other?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, no, I'm fine, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, if I can chime in, well, I'm one of those individuals who I can say firsthand if knowledge, dealing with them directly at the Opportunity Center on a regular basis, going down and feeding the individual that's sheltered there. You know, you have a combination, as John indicated to you, a variety of people that are housed at the Opportunity Center. You know, when you talk about the county jail as far as their capacity and the, keeping the distance and all that, as far as the capacity, a lot of individuals, as opposed to being locked up, being arrested and going to jail, the police department, the charity department, take them to the Opportunity Center. So as well as those going to the mercy room, or going to, that mainly, that will, that will further increase the number of people going to the mercy room, that, the Opportunity Center is taking that, that blunt, the overflow of those individuals. So I would say to, to, to all concerned, that we need to do everything we can to support the Opportunity Center, in particular at this time, in this need of crisis, because without them, we would be in bad shape. It would be very devastating to our community as far as what we do. Then you would say, well, the jails are full of capacity, the mercy rooms are overflowing with people that, where our capacity has been overflowed. So do what we can, and if it's, if it's appropriate to do it at this time, Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we support this action.
Okay, second?
And just to clarify, it's the motion to approve and authorize the judge to sign the MOU with the El Pasoans, I'm sorry, this is the Opportunity Center one, correct?
That's correct, uh-huh.
That's correct.
Yes, yes, to assign the MOU with the Opportunity Center for the homeless for reentry services. This is Christina.
Commissioner Pettis?
That's correct.
Thank you, Judge. I just have a quick question. How is the 100,000 derived, I guess, at this point? You know, my only concern in all of this is just the, the duration in which we're going to be, you know, in this, in this unique situation, and just want to be sure that, you know, we're taking that into consideration, is the length of time that we could be looking at something like this, where, you know, partnerships with the Opportunity Center, you know, who we're going to fight, looking at next with El Pasoans fighting hunger, I guess, how was that amount derived?
This was the amount that, the 100,000 that's here was, was already budgeted in the, in the reentry support, with the, with the idea that it may be allocated to the Opportunity Center last year. So that amount was already there, so that, that, that was something that we had come to last year as a, as a recommendation of support in talks with the Opportunity Center of what, of how the county could most effectively and reasonably help them, based on what they had, the resources that they were providing back to the county. So some of that was quantified by the, I believe it was 88 individuals, 85 individuals, I believe, referred to them, bought through the public defender's office, and then the, the individuals that were, that they had housed within one month of release from the county jail. And we had done some calculations based on how much that cost the Opportunity Center, and that kind of helped us say, hey, what, how can we support them in that? And at the same time, how can the county more engage in helping them with their infrastructure? So that, that number of 100,000 came from that. I don't think this is a commitment, Commissioner, necessarily to do this every year, but we will continue to look at it as it comes. With our reentry services, we have been trying to, in the jail, trying to coordinate better so that less individuals are pushed into the Opportunity Center out, out of a reentry crisis, because there was no planning, which, which happened a lot. And so now, there's much more planning in the jail, not with as many as we would like, but with the 72 individuals in the jail in our program, there's a lot more coordination going on that may help relieve them from that in the future. So as we think about support in the future, we will, we will continue to use the data to help inform our decision on, on if and how much we need to support agencies like the Opportunity Center. Is that, did that, to your question?
Very thoughtful process, thank you for giving us that feedback, and the community, that it's not just a random number that we came up with.
Judge, one other comment, Judge. You know, that the planning coordination is great, and Joel's doing a great job in coordination with all the departments involved, but I, but I will submit to you that $100,000, if we, if it was not for the Opportunity Center, that $100,000, how much would it cost us for those individuals? I will submit to you, they'd be five to 10 times more, when you say you're housing at the county jail, or putting in UMC compared to the $100,000 that we were talking about today.
Totally agree. We're real sensitive to that, that situation and the overflow. That's what we don't want, is that the overflow becomes, you know, sending them to the Opportunity Center and then burdening them as much they've already been, lost some support from different government agencies, and so we understand that. I think it's a, something, this one and the next topic, that we keep an eye on going forward. Joel, thank you very much.
Let me give, just bear with me. Let me give you one more comment. One meal, you're talking about three meals a day, 365 days a year, for those individuals, so you, on the days that I feed out at the shelter, and I'm paying, paying for my personal fund, on the average, between 100 and 150 individuals that they're feeding in one meal, and I generally do the easy meal, we will have 100 to 150 people at one meal. So that will cost me minimum, see, that many people providing with an adequate hot meal, $250, $250, $50 just for one meal. So you add that up, you say three meals a day, 365 days a year, do the math.
Absolutely. No, and I appreciate those comments. I think the public also needs to know the, the burden and the, what's taking place there. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that, and Betsy, you'll keep us sort of understanding where maybe there's some areas that need less help at this time, and, and see what's available. So we have a motion on the...
I'm sorry, I'd just like to rec, real quick, recognize as well, the hard work that went into this over the weekend, from the county attorneys, Erica Rosales and Ryan Kerr worked very hard to get this ready, and Irene Valenzuela, I know they were working Saturday and Sunday, making sure that this was taken care of, and this is just another fine example of, of county employees coming together, working hard, overtime hours over the weekend to, to deal with these things, and it also shows how much they care about these issues and our communities.
Well, thank you, and always, we use this forum to recognize so many people that, and it's never gets old, okay? So anytime we can recognize and use this forum, it's very much appreciated, so. So we do have that motion?
We had a motion and a second.
Good morning. Please join us for Monday morning prayer.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson? We're taking the vote, sir?
Yeah, I said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding with El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank for immediate financial relief to assist in maintaining food bank services, to include providing food and personal care supplies to county residents and emergency shelters in response to the COVID-19 crisis, in the amount of $100,000. Funding is available in General Fund, Economic Impact Healthy Food, contract number 2020-0252.
Joel, we have, we also, we have Susan Goodell coming on the line. We also have a member of the public calling in on this item. Miguel, are you able to incorporate that person as well?
I will dial both of them.
And also, BJ is also available, he's part of the board, also said he'd be available for any questions, but he didn't...
That may be him?
He may be with Susan. I had asked them if they could conference together.
Oh, excellent.
And then, I believe the one that's on for public is Stuart Schwartz, which I think he's also actively involved.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm calling Susan Goodell right now.
Thank you.
County Judge and Commissioners Joel Bishop with County Administration.
Hello?
Is that Susan on the line?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Hi, Susan, Joel Bishop here, you're in, you're in live court, Commissioner's Court. We'll ask you in a minute to make some comments on this, on the item that we're considering this morning.
Wait, are you calling the chairman of our board in, or should I do that?
Is this chair, hold on just one second, we're trying to get another person on the line.
I'm going to now call Stuart Schwartz.
Yes, please.
We know that the needs of El Pasoans Fighting Hunger have been pressed over the last couple of weeks.
Hi, this is Stuart. Please leave a message.
Unknown participant is now joining.
At the tone, please record your message.
We'll wait till we get them all on the line.
I've, I've ended the call.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Susan, do you want to try to reach Stuart directly?
Yes, I'll do that.
We'll hold just a second, while you do that.
Okay, hold on.
Was he the member of the...
No, and he's also on their board. The chair of their board. Hi, Stuart?
Yes.
Okay, Joel, go ahead, proceed.
Yeah.
We've got Susan and Stuart, and then Joel, you'll give us your comments, and then we'll bring them in.
Okay. Commissioners Joel Bishop again with County Administration, and County Judge, thank you for hearing this item this morning. Again, this is another one, a lot of work went over the, the last few days to prepare this. Much has been discussed with El Pasoans Fighting Hunger over the last week regarding their needs and how they've been pressed through this, this crisis, and their growing needs and the strength... and the strain on their, on their system. And we also looked at how a further partnership with them would benefit county residents. And I think that that's reflected in this MOU, the potential for not only spreading out some of the crowds, in, in the potential crowds as the stores, as the strain on the local grocery stores may increase in the future, but this could provide county sites with resources directly from El Pasoans Fighting Hunger to distribute to county residents in, in, at various sites and locations. So I believe that this partnership will be beneficial to the county. There's been a lot of thought put into this. And, and we know that there, again, there's been a pressure and strain on their, on their resources and they have, we've been working on ways to help partner with them already even before this, this recent crisis. With that, I would like to allow Susan and Stuart to share any thoughts that they may have, if that's okay with the court. Okay, Susan, you're on.
Good morning.
Okay.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. This is Stuart Schwartz, and I'm a senior attorney with the Scott Hulse Law Firm. But today I'm speaking as chairman of the board of El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank here in El Paso. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, approximately 200,000 citizens in our community were food insecure. Unfortunately, the social isolation required to reduce the spread of this virus has had the unintended consequence of increasing food insecurity for our community's most vulnerable citizens. Elderly, poor, and the working poor have been especially hard hit as access to free meals has become more difficult, and hospitality, retail, and service-related jobs have evaporated. Every day, El Pasoans Fighting Hunger provides the ingredients for 74,200 meals, 365 days a year. Over the past year, the food bank has been here for this community through each of the disasters we have faced. The government shutdown, for example, where the food bank provided thousands of pounds of healthy food for government employees, including ICE, Border Patrol, La Tuna Penitentiary, the federal courts, air traffic control, et cetera. The refugee crisis, where the food bank provided over 2 million pounds of food and hygiene products for the refugees entering our community. The mass shooting on August 3 was another such example, where the food bank provided food and beverages for the victims, families, and first responders at the family assistance center, as well as beverages at the family reunification center, funerals, and vigils held throughout the community. The COVID-19 situation, this horrible pandemic is no exception. And on behalf of the board and the staff, we commit to you that El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank will again do everything in our power to support this community with needed healthy food and hygiene products for our community's most vulnerable people. I thank you so much, Commissioners for and County Judge, for considering this item. As the food bank rapidly ramps up our service to the community, we are grateful for the partnership with the county and appreciate your financial support to help ensure that the food bank has adequate funding for additional food and hygiene supplies, transportation funding, and increased manpower. And with that, I'd like now to turn it over to our CEO, Susan Goodell, who along with her incredible staff are here to provide additional detail on the work the food bank is undertaking to ensure our community's low-income residents have access to healthy food they need to weather this pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Susan, go ahead.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this morning. And I also wanted to let you know that the food bank is working hard to address the serious increase in food insecurity in our community. It seems hardly believable that it was just over a week ago when this became such an immense crisis here in the community. While the food bank had been planning weeks in advance, the closure of the 12 city senior centers on Friday, March 14th, followed quickly by the closing of the eight senior centers that the county operates, really spurred us to, to increase our efforts exponentially. So we began making emergency food boxes for distribution to the seniors and had, in fact, been able to provide 640 of these emergency food boxes to seniors by Tuesday, March 17th, at the 12 city senior centers, and another 100 plus on March 19th, only two days later, at the eight city, or eight county senior centers. The immediate action that we were able to take to start ramping up the production of these emergency centers has been fueled by volunteers and lots of other hard work to make sure that we can produce as many emergency boxes as possible. We began distributing emergency boxes at the food bank on March 19th. That Thursday, we provided 1,060 emergency boxes in a drive-through setting. On Friday, the 20th, we distributed another 1,091 boxes. And I'm looking out the window here at the food bank right now, and within the first two hours, we've already put out over 200 emergency boxes. The line goes about a mile away from the food bank, up the 375 access road at the moment. And we are working hard with the volunteers that we have to produce as many boxes as possible. We are also standing up five to six sites strategically located around the, the region. And these sites are in the northeast. We have Katie's Pantry, that is building emergency food boxes with our food and distributing it, again, drive-through style to ensure that we maintain social distancing and reduce any risk of further spreading the virus. In the lower valley, we have Camino de Vida. On the east side, we have a food bank. In the central area, we have Kelly Memorial Food Pantry. In the west, starting tomorrow, we have Abundant Living Safe Center. And we're also concurrently working on developing a site in the northwest part of the city so that we are ringing the mountain with emergency drive-through stations. So the food bank is prioritizing first the vulnerable seniors that traditionally have gotten the free meals at the 20 senior centers. We are setting up these five to six mega drive-through sites. We're prioritizing homeless centers and out-county residents while still trying to maintain as much service as possible to the hundreds of kitchen shelters and pantries we serve traditionally across the region. Basically, I want to say how grateful we are to the county. Irene Valenzuela, Rosalva Hernandez, and their colleagues in the Nutrition Department have just been phenomenal in working with us to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens are fed. We're grateful to the leadership of the county. We're grateful for the financial support to make sure that we are able to bring in even more food than we do on a normal basis into the community during this time of need, and that we're able to afford the increased cost of transportation to transport tractor-trailers load of food long distances into the community of El Paso. With that, I'd be happy to open it to any questions that you might have.
Susan and Stuart, I guess, not so much questions, but just very thankful for the effort. You know, every time we have a crisis, our partnership gets stronger. And so I think we're, you know, we're realizing more than ever, same thing with the Opportunity Center for the homeless. You know, when things get tough, both your partnership and the one with the Opportunity Center rises to the top. And so we know that you go from sort of unrecognized to understanding the impact that you have on our community. So very thankful. I know Commissioners are always looking at, you know, what can we do to help the Opportunity Center and also, you know, the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger is very important. And I think going forward, we really need to look at the kind of support that you need. Commissioner Robinson made the point of, you know, the, the investment we make in anything we do like these 100,000 is very little compared to the impact that it would have in our community if both partnerships weren't available. So I hope you do understand, we're very, very cognizant of, of the support from the food bank. And I get to talk to VJ and his passion as well about us supporting. So thank you very much for that. And I don't have any questions. Commissioner Perez?
Thank you, Joel. You know, something that I brought up has just been access in, in the rural areas, you know, when, when we look at Torneo, you know, Torneo is about an hour away, you know, from the courthouse, you know, the Fabin's area, and then Montana Vista. I mean, geographically at least, the precinct I represent is just, it's very large. And so as long as there's consideration to, to making sites available to, to where folks in the rural areas have access to that, that's very important. I heard that there was Camino de Vida, but I, but I don't believe that's, that's out in, in the rural areas and outlying areas. So that's been, that's, that's my, one of my primary concerns is where there's already limited access to grocery stores or oftentimes, there's only one grocery store within, you know, five to 10-mile radius for some communities. And I just want to be sure that this, this funding at least goes to help to mitigate that, where folks are already facing limited supplies and have access to that.
Yes.
Do you address that, Joel, or is that Susan?
Well, we did address it in the, in the agreement. Maybe not that specifically, but that was exactly what we had in mind, was that they would deliver food to these sites at least once per week. And these are county sites established, including our Far East sites and some of these locations where community services is already operating. So that's what we had in mind with that, and we're hoping that that will, this agreement will help accomplish exactly what you're talking about and even help avoid some of the traffic to the, to the, potential traffic to the stores and whatnot, that for those needy in those areas, that they will have sites that are much closer and that are, that are readily available through this partnership with El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. So we're hoping it goes there. But with that, Susan, did you have any other thoughts on that as far as...
Sure. Yes, I probably should have mentioned that we are ramping up our mobile distributions as well. Traditionally, those have been done in a farmer's market style. Given the need to social distance, we are eliminating that aspect of the mobile distributions and instead doing mobile distributions of the emergency boxes. Those are happening in out-county areas, and they're also happening frankly in, in counties beyond El Paso, where we're doing these mobile distributions in Culberson and Hudson counties as well. So we're very cognizant of the, the needs in the rural communities. And I was just notified by my team this morning that San Elizario, for example, is doing home deliveries of emergency boxes to shut in seniors. So yes, our service to the community is including these more rural communities and extends further than my comments earlier.
Thank you, Susan.
And that would include, that also would include Vinson and Westway.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, say that again?
Yes, we do.
I didn't get the question.
Yeah, I think that's about Vinson, access to Vinson.
Okay.
I feel that it should also include Vinson, Westway, Canatillo.
We currently have distributions with Vinson, the Village of Vinson, and we are looking to establish a site in Canatillo. And we've been talking to the county nutrition staff about potentially working together to establish an additional site in Canatillo. That would be our sixth site.
Thank you.
Right, and I say, Westway should be included as well.
Okay, we can certainly look into that. We will, we'll just need a site for distribution, a physical site.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to Stuart as well, who's on the line. Again, similar question to what I had on the last item, is that when, you're, you're clearly facing an increase in, in demand right now, which is understandable given the amount of uncertainty that we're seeing with this. And again, the run on grocery stores and limited supply of various, you know, food items. Can, can you put into context, I guess, what $100,000 provides, I guess, relative to the demand that you're seeing? You know, how many people, I guess, are you serving, you know, daily? And I guess what this $100,000 means? And I guess, again, when we, when we think about this and that this might be a prolonged, or it's likely going to be a very prolonged situation, if you can just kind of put that into context for us, if you're already seeing increased demand that, and long lines today?
Susan?
Sure. So we're looking at distributing between 1,000 and 1,500 emergency boxes per day, per site, in these mega drive-through facilities. So as I mentioned, the food bank was already in the 1,100 range and growing the amount that we're doing out of our facility. What that means is each one of those boxes has to be assembled by volunteers. Each box weighs a minimum of about 50 pounds. And we're also servicing all of the 20 senior centers that are requiring another, just under 1,000 pounds a week. Each one of these boxes contains ingredients for about a week's worth of food. So people will need to, people who do not have the means to go to grocery stores will need to come back in a week so that they can get another week's worth of supplies. We're also supplying 3,100 senior boxes for the commodity supplemental food program as we traditionally have through many of these sites. What this means to the food bank is that we are in desperate need of volunteers. Each one of these mega sites need probably 40 to 80 volunteers at any given time building emergency boxes. This morning, for the, for example, at the food bank, we had 17, so well below the number of volunteers that we need. But we're utilizing those volunteers supplemented by staff very effectively to build the 1,000-plus boxes needed a day. Unfortunately, some of the other sites have not been as fortunate, and the food bank has been forced to not only provide ingredients to the other sites, but we're also building additional boxes here and shipping them to sites that have not been able to build their own. The challenge for us is also in terms of food availability. Just like the grocery stores, emergency food supplies are becoming increasingly difficult and expensive to get. Under normal circumstances, we would send our own tractor-trailers to get food product, and we continue to do that because it is the most effective and efficient and least expensive method. So for example, when we go to Nogales, Arizona, to pick up fresh produce, there's no cost of the produce, it's only the diesel and manpower, so it's about $300 to get a tractor-trailer load of food. Our tractors, the four that we have, are already operating at capacity. So we are having to hire additional trucking companies to bring additional food into El Paso, and this is costing us anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per tractor-trailer load to bring that food here. Each tractor-trailer load contains about 42,000 pounds of food, so it's still a good deal compared to retail prices. But it is increasing the cost to the food bank to procure food for this community.
It, Susan, it also looks like you indicated about 60,000 boxes of food would result with 20,000, roughly $19,200 from, from the contributions here, including staffing, transportation, support, and produce packaging fees, specifically from what the county's giving you. Does that sound correct?
I haven't calculated it in that term. I'm thinking more in terms of tractor-trailer load of boxes, which is about 30,000 boxes cost about $12,000.
Okay.
The 10 to 12,000, we might be able to get it more, get it a reduced price possibly, but that's typically what it costs. A tractor-trailer load of food is running between 5,000 and 10,000, between the cost of the food and the transportation. So I'm, I'm not thinking in terms of boxes at this point. I'm thinking much greater volume of what does it take to get the food into the community and to get the boxes necessary.
Okay. I might also mention too, just, I wanted to reiterate how thankful we were this last week when they stepped up and helped us with the senior center crisis. I know, speaking closely with Irene Valenzuela, there was a lot of relief that El Pasoans Fighting Hunger stepped up and helped us with that. We want to thank you for that. And I also, it was nice last week with the Opportunity Center having an issue with, potential issue with food and being able to, knowing that they're there and connecting them. And I know she's been there, working directly with all of our homeless shelters to potentially provide support as they need it as well.
Thank you, Joel. So move to approve?
Second.
Good.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, this is Wally from Budget and Fiscal Policy.
I'm sorry, this is Stuart. Just to thank you all again for your support on this item. We really appreciate it, Judge and Commissioners, and we're, we're here for El Paso, we'll be here for the long term, and we just need to get through this crisis, and we appreciate your support during these very challenging times.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, Wally from Budget and Fiscal Policy?
Here's Wally.
I just wanted to chime in and let you know that as expenditures of this type and the last item are being incurred and funded, we are working closely to take these budgets and transfer them also into our COVID-19 account and transfer the set expenses along with those, so we can meet our requirements of tracking for future potential reimbursement from state and federal proceeds.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate it.
Item number nine, information technology. Approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the agreement between the County of El Paso and Sequel Data Systems. Funding is available in General Fund ITD Maintenance Repair Software. Contract number 20200182.
We have Christopher on the line?
I apologize, I'm covering this for our department.
Oh, thank you, Betsy.
Bear with me. We do have Chris on the line if we need him, but basically, we are recommending approval. This is a contract for our backup server and licenses agreement with Sequel Data Systems. It is the software infrastructure that provides county employees with access to the majority of technology-based solutions. Functions including data file storage and enterprise-level applications like Odyssey and Munis are all dependent on this foundation. The backup software is a mission critical to providing a platform for dat, data recovery in case of serious failure, disaster, or cyber attacks. So we are requesting that the Court approve and authorize the County Judge to sign this agreement for the purchase of a new backup software between the County of El Paso and Sequel Data Systems. This agreement will provide the county the continued coverage and support we need, and it has been reviewed and approved by IT, the County Attorney's Office, and the Purchasing Department, and we recommend approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to Commissioners Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize El Paso County Sheriff's Office and Constable Precincts 1 and 6 to apply to the Department of Homeland Security FY 2020 Operation Stone Garden in the amount of $1,099,173.92 for the Sheriff's Office, $56,156.19 for Constable Precinct 1, and $112,312.39 for Constable Precinct 6. No county match is required. Contract number 20200233.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Narduthi, El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Patrol Bureau. This is a ongoing application that we apply for annually. This year, we are including Constable Precinct 1. This will be their first award if, if granted. Funding will go to overtime, and for Constable Precinct 6, I believe he's asking for some equipment, because this will be his second award qualifies him for equipment.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This brings us to item 11 from executive session. Item 11A, discuss findings regarding persons necessary in executive session, and item 11B, discuss pending litigation style, Monica Provencio, correction, Monica Y. Provencio versus County of El Paso, cause number 2017DCV1719, county attorneys, case number 014317LD, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. We ask for a motion for these two items be deleted.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, I just want to remind the Court and the public that next week, we are prepared for the Court to all attend Commissioners Court virtually, and it will help us, as we're managing a lot of different forms of technology, it will really help us if all members of the Court attend virtually. You can either do this from an off-site location or from your offices here at the courthouse, if you'd prefer, but we're asking that you all attend virtually. Additionally, as we discussed previously, if you'd like for us to have the invocation attend virtually or telephonically, we'd also be able to do that.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, we are. Thank you. Thank you for that guidance as well.
This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
This completes today's meeting at 11:15 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everybody.